Let's call the meeting to order at 6:37.
I'd like to add a couple of things to the agenda if possible.
Okay.
I'd like to add in tax collector refund on item number four.
Okay.
And then item number five, I'd like to add in Sarah Ficker for appointment to the Park and Rec and to the Auditorium Management Committee.
Great, thank you. That's a motion?
So moved.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. So the second item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on January 8th, 2019.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes.
Seconded.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Third item is to discuss impossible action on emergency management director appointment, Matt Herman. Matt is going to try to be here, but he doesn't, I'm not sure he's going to make it. I think he doesn't need to be. Matt is, well, let me just back up and give you a little history. Jerry Clark has been our emergency management director for quite a long time. The last couple of years, the last few years, he's been heading down to Florida in the wintertime. About a year ago, he expressed interest in, if we could find a replacement, to find a replacement. Matt was recommended to us by a former emergency management director, Keith Nelson. And he recommended him very highly. Jerry and Matt have gotten along. Matt is a member of the Deep River Fire Department, but also of the Ambulance Association. He's been involved in the emergency operations for about 11 years. And I think it's, I think it's, number one, it's appropriate to have someone local. Jerry will continue to work, but Matt's going to be in town all year round. And he's already involved in the ambulance and the fire, so he's, you know, he's pretty well clued in as to where that, where that part of it's coming from. And we need his help as far as putting together our new emergency operations plan and all that kind of thing, so.
I'm all for it. The only question that I would have would be, will that take away from him helping out on the fire department and helping out on the ambulance?
No, no, not, not really. Most of the thing, what I've, what I've learned anyway is that the times the emergency management director is needed when the emergency operations are in place, our first responders are already out already. They're already involved. They're at the fire department, they're at the ambulance association if necessary. But, you know, most of the times it's for big storms. And they're, they're already out helping and doing whatever their, their first people there. Which is why I think over time, the emergency operations center has evolved to be in the firehouse. You know, for years it was in the town hall, then they moved it up to the old fire and ambulance museum, what's now the museum. And it's kind of has evolved back down to the firehouse. And I think it's in the plans for the new firehouse to have a space there to be used for that. So I don't think it'll be in the way at all.
Okay.
Nice young man and very eager to get started, so. If we could, if we want to have any more conversation about it, that's fine, but if we don't, we could go for a motion.
Make a motion that we appoint Matt Herman as emergency management director for the town of Deep River.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Matt. Coincidentally, I grew up across the street from, I didn't grow up, but lived across the street from his dad when I was a young guy back in Old Saverick. Also, a good upstanding citizen.
Good.
All right, item number four, tax collector refunds. We're going to try to do this every, every month. We give the refunds out and think it's appropriate for that to go through the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. So just to bring you up to speed, we've got three different refunds that need to go out for a total of $6,350. One of those, just out of, just for, one of those is the driver on that. It's the first of a three-time payment. Connecticut Solar leases solar panels around the town. We believe, and I still do believe, that that is a commercial enterprise, whether they're used privately or not. The lease is a commercial enterprise. The people don't own the panels that are on their house, they're being leased. And so we've been taxing for that. Connecticut Solar took us to court along with about 100 other towns. We've been tied up in court for about a year and a half. And I think we're spending more now on attorney's fees than we are going to get back on the taxes, so we made the decision to, to come to an agreement. And then that's where we're at. That's what this is. That's the better part of that. That's, that's the first of three installments that'll take place over the next year.
How much was that?
The total is $6,350. The solar is $5,065. So we could have a motion to, to refund the money to Jim Budney, Connecticut Solar and Toyota Lease Trust, and then we can move them forward.
I'd like to make a motion to give back the $6,350 refund to the people that we spoke about this evening.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And fifth on the agenda is the appointment of Sarah Ficker to both, Ficker.
Ficker.
Ficker. I'm sorry, I've always pronounced it Ficker. I'm glad you corrected that. Ficker. Sarah Ficker. Sarah has asked to get involved and she's volunteered. She met with Carol Jones, who actually is in charge of both the Park and Recreation and the Auditorium Management Committee. And Sarah's agreed to help on both, and both committees are in dire need of volunteers. So this is very much appreciated. And I'm very grateful to get Sarah involved. She's, she's going to be a great citizen here in town, so we're happy to have her. And she dressed nice and warmly tonight, so.
Wisely so.
So unless we have more conversation and appointment, it'd be great.
Make a motion that we appoint Sarah Ficker to the Planning, Correction, Parks and Recs Commission and Auditorium Management Committee.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Sarah, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, audience of citizens. Jane?
We have had a vacancy for the alternate position on planning and zoning for a long time.
Correct.
We now have two. I thought it was because nobody was volunteering for that delightful spot. But that's not true. I have found out that a number of people have sent letters in saying that they are interested. And I think that we should fill them. Not only because we might need them for warm if people like me are going to go on vacation, something's warm. They just can't get into town because of the weather. In the summer, they're on vacation. Those, there should be three alternates on planning and zoning. They need some time to acclimate, and I would like to see those positions filled. And I don't know why some of the applications have been held up. So I'd like to know why.
Okay. The applications came in, we had, two applications came in over the past couple of years.
I heard three.
Two came in over the past couple of years. We have four applications now for them, as I explained at the last meeting that we were at regarding Jonathan's appointment. Two of those applications, that the oldest ones, both of them had complications based on, one of the applicant was the chairman of the Design Advisory Board. We've been speaking with him. He's got, he is actually the oldest application. We've been speaking with him. I think he would be a very good member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. But we need to, pardon?
No.
Go ahead.
No, I was just wondering if that was Peter, but I think it was not.
No, the name Peter has applied.
He's not the chair, the head of that.
No. The second applied about a year ago, and her husband is now the, is the existing alternate, Chris DeRochers. I explained to both of them that I had a concern about a husband and wife. We already have a husband and wife on the commission. And while it is not a problem, I think it could be. Mostly because if they go on vacation, there are two people that are not able to be there. So she has not withdrawn, but she's waited patiently to see whether Chris is going to stay on and things like that. Subsequent to that, with the, some of the activity that has been surrounding the Planning and Zoning Commission of late, we have had two more applications. One of whom is Jim Olson, who announced that after, at the last meeting, that he had applied. And the other is a fellow named Roger Williams, who's an architect in town, who has also made a note and expressed his interest. We have four people to choose some. We will, we will look at them all and weigh the pros and the cons. Simple application does not necessarily mean that you're qualified for it, and things like presuming, you know, getting on, asking to get on the planning commission because you're, you've expressed an interest in restricting development. That, to me, is a little bit of a roadblock. So we need to look at these, at these people carefully. I also wanted to, because we have to schedule another town meeting, to confirm whoever gets appointed, I'd like to do them both together. There has only been one vacancy until just recently when we had Sarah resign, and that made the second vacancy. So we're not sitting on anything, nothing, no one is being held off intentionally. It is simply we're trying to make the best decisions that we can.
Not to be sexist, but, and I know you can't make a recommendation based on sex, but we do need some more women on board. And I, at that, at the meeting, I thought there was somebody that was a little bit behind me, and she said she was applying, or had applied.
No, she didn't. She was talking about her husband, had spoken to me about Economic Development Commission a number of years ago.
Do the letters come before the three of you?
They have not yet. They will. Everyone will get a chance to look at them. And we'll, we'll have a conversation about it and go forward from that.
I have to tell you, I didn't feel that I was terribly qualified. I taught, I was, I taught some geology. I know some things about runoff and geological stuff. But that was many years ago. I don't know what Dick Smith thought my qualifications were, other than my mother.
Well, that's a good qualification.
Well, she was, she believed we volunteered.
Yep. I think we all do.
And she, she really felt that that was an important thing to do.
So we have had to, just to sum up, you're, you're 100% right. We'd love to have more women on there. Right now, there are two women on that commission, on a commission of seven. That's a pretty good ratio. I'd like to get that spread around all of our committees and commissions. We had, we had three up until Sarah resigned.
Yeah, we had three before.
So, and that's, that's pretty darn good. So I don't think that that's really a valid statement, that it's not a, not a diverse or, or, you know, that there's any kind of sexist effort to keep women off of that commission. That's not even close.
No, you can't, the point, the point I was trying to make was that you can't choose a candidate simply based on sex.
No, you shouldn't, that's for sure.
You know, you should be taking what we feel is, is the best. I'm just, if you've got two that are equal in the future.
Yeah.
But no, I would not, you can't.
That's 100% correct.
There also has to be, doesn't there have to be some kind of balance, Democrat and Republican?
Yes, that's correct. We have room right now for one Republican and one Democrat, one, we have to have, one of the two seats needs to be filled by a Republican. The other can be filled by anybody, any affiliation whatsoever, even unaffiliated, which would be okay too. So, and.
What's wellens, do they have any openings?
Wellens does not, that I'm aware of right now. And there's talk, where, there's conversation about splitting the conservation and the wellens commission. There we get into the question of whether we're going to be able to get enough volunteers to fill, to staff both, both commissions. But that, that's only one of the considerations about that.
And I'm interested in your statement about, it can get a little iffy about having husband, well, I shouldn't say husband, family members on the same board.
Yeah, especially a young family. They've got young children. And it's just a concern. It's not a, it's not a deciding factor, but it is a concern and has been a deciding factor thus far. But, you know, certainly, I'll distribute the, the letters to everyone, and we'll go from that. But, you know, we've got a little breather. I kind of want to, I had hoped that we could let the dust settle a little bit from the last couple of months of planning and zoning interest. Well, good. Anything else? Then I'll take a motion to Jim.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. This is the Board of Finance meeting, the first meeting of 2019, the January 2019 meeting. The first item on our agenda would be the approval of the minutes of November.
November.
November 2018. Could I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
So moved. Do you want to have a second? Any discussion with that in mind? Can I, all in favor of accepting the minutes?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see, do we have correspondence? Do we have received any letters from anyone? Tell us what a good job we're doing.
Yes.
Let's go to other business, all right? Jen Clark is with us. Can I call you Jen, or do you go by Jennifer? Jennifer, sorry. Jennifer is, although I wrote you notes calling you Jen, you should.
And I did not correct you.
I only use that as a defense, that's why I use, but it will not happen again. Jennifer Clark is with us. Jennifer is the current chairman of the Regional Four Board, that's right, the Regional Board. And she has initiated the contact, although Jane has been attempting to initiate it for quite some time, so everyone gets a, but. I will let you start off with what you would like to share, and we'll share back.
Okay, well, thank you very much for letting me come. I hope this is the first of maybe annual meetings between ourselves. I think that it's very important that we have a dialogue. And so, this being my first meeting, I hope you'll bear with me, because I, I want to spend a few minutes talking about the governance of our schools. Then I want to spend a minute talking about Ruth Levy's job. And then I want to move on to some of the big picture opportunities we have for improving our governance. And then I also want to talk to you about some of the things that changes that this board has been making in the last year and continues to make, and will be making over the next couple of years. That sounds like a lot, but I pretty much have it pared down to a five, maybe seven-minute monologue perhaps. But I don't want it to be a monologue. And, and I do want to have a dialogue, so please feel free to interrupt me if I say something that you need me to expand upon.
Hopefully you can make your reservation. Would you define when you say governance? I've heard it used often. You've said you're going to talk much about governance. Could you define that term before we start?
So a governance structure tells you who reports to whom and where the lines of responsibility lie. And that can be used in business, or government, or your family. So our, and forgive me, I really don't want to feel like I'm telling you things that you already know, but I do think it's important that we start with a same understanding. And I'm a little bit of a T-crosser, I-daughter, so I really want to just start by perhaps telling you stuff you already know, but just to be sure. So as you know, we have three elementary schools between the three towns. Each elementary school is a LEA, its own LEA. An LEA is a local education agency. Then we have the high school and the junior high school. They are combined into a regional LEA, again, local education agency. So that's four LEAs that educate our children from kindergarten through 12. Each LEA is governed by a board. Those four boards together form the joint boards and have also formed the Supervision District Board. And it is the Supervision District Board that hired Ruth Levy, that hires our superintendent.
It's actually a committee, but it's not a board.
Moving on. We argue about that a little bit. It's complicated. It means that the budgeting is complicated. You know that, how complicated the budgeting is. The reports that go to the state government have to be divided in multiple different ways. I, I think you all know that the Supervision District was created in about 2000 to, as an efficient way to have a single paying entity that could negotiate with, with unions and be a, a single buying power, and as a larger buying power, have more power. So the Supervision District, which was created in the year 2000 to oversee mutual expenses throughout the four boards, has already created a certain efficiency in terms of saving money for the towns, but the structure itself is highly complicated. Which takes me to the job of the supervision, the superintendent. The superintendent answers to five boards, multiple meetings. There are also three committees, major committees, that need to meet on a regular basis. For education, there's the finance committee of the boards, there's the Joint Curriculum Committee, and the Policy Committee. Then there are additional committees that have to do with building and grounds, school safety, and a whole host of other things that I can't think of right now. But the point being, our superintendent of the four nights a week available for meetings, because a lot of meetings happen at night, like this one, of the four nights every week that our superintendent has available to her, I can tell you that from the 2nd of January until mid-May, there are only two nights that she is not at a meeting. And that's a very challenging lifestyle. That's not a lifestyle I would choose to have. So my concern, looking into the future, is when this very excellent superintendent decides that she's had enough, and she just got married a year ago, no.
September.
It feels like a year. She just got married. You know, when she, when she wants to step down, we're going to have to hire another superintendent. And many of you may remember that before Ruth Levy, there was Mr. Kim, who was there for two years. And for the three or four years before that, we had three superintendents. That was four superintendents over five years. I've been told by the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, our region is known as a superintendent eater, because we eat up our superintendents. And that was the case until we hired Dr. Levy. She has established some great educational programs, and she's provided us with stability and, and continuity for the last nine years, but that ain't going to last forever. And so what I'm saying is that I don't feel that our governance structure, because of the multiple boards and the multiple necessary meetings because of those multiple boards, I don't see it as a viable, long-term educational structure that makes sense. I am really concerned that we're going to just end up having superintendents that just go through in a year or two, using us as a stepping stone to a bigger school system. So there are many people who agree with me that this is not a sustainable organization. You all remember that a couple of years ago, there was a push towards regionalization. Now, regionalization is something that has been pushed every couple of years. Norm Needleman told me it was like every seven to 10 years, there was some movement for regionalization. Regionalization is very scary, because when you regionalize, if you regionalize, every town, voting town member gets a vote. And so you would have potentially a larger town making decisions for a smaller town. And so there's a loss of control there for that smaller town. So I can see why regionalization is just not something that people are very attracted to, unless you're really invested in the whole educational process. But other than that, I can see how that could be concerning. There is an alternative. There's an idea, but it's not a reality yet. And that idea is called the cooperative agreement. And you may have read an article about it in the paper, I think that was about a month ago or so. A cooperative agreement is not a reality because at this point, the Supervision District is not a recognized LEA. So taking you back a couple of minutes ago, we have four LEAs. The Supervision District is a business construction. It is not a local education agency. For us to have a different structure from regionalization, to have, for us to have an alternative, we need to have the Supervision District be allowed by the state to be a local education agency. That would allow for one budget appropriated or apportioned to the three towns, so that those towns have governance over their portion of the budget. But we can't do that, because we need one sentence changed at the state legislature, in the state statutes. Ruth and Lon, Lon Seidman, proposed this change in wording last year. It didn't go through last year. They're very optimistic that this change in wording will go through by this June. Personally, I'm a pessimist. I don't think it's going to go through. Jane and I were arguing about it in the hallway. She thinks it's going to go through, and she can tell you more about that.
I just think really quickly, I think this year, because Norm Needleman now is on with the state senators, and he basically is very fluent in our district, I think he's going to be able to be more of an advocate for this. And Christine Palm, being from Chester too, part of our district, really understands this, whereas before we didn't have quite that kind of political representation.
So, it is an idea. I don't want to repeat the mistakes of the past, where you had Dr. Levy, who's so enthusiastic, sometimes she doesn't see that there's a need to be circumspect or quieter. Dr. Levy can get carried away. Dr. Levy came, and I think perhaps startled people with her plans for regionalization a couple of years ago. I don't think that that's the right way to go about things. I think if cooperative agreement is a good idea, it's an idea that will stand for itself. And I feel that if the wording gets changed on a state level, and the region, the school, school boards start to consider it, I think that we should give you a lot of information. And I would hope that this would become a dialogue and not a one-way communication. I don't want to bore you too much more about cooperative agreement. I did bring a bunch of bullet points about it, which I will hand out in both directions, and you can read it at your leisure at home. Any questions before I move on to the last portion of my little monologue about what we've been doing and what we're going to be doing? Because that was a big chunk of information I just handed you. If you have no questions, I'm going to keep talking, and I'll only take another couple of minutes of your time.
I have a question. Not 100% pertaining to what your focus was, but I thought that we hired a second, an assistant superintendent to take some of the meetings off of the superintendent's agenda. Does that, is that not happening?
So she does take some of the meetings off of the superintendent's agenda, and she manages a lot of the internal affairs of the school.
Okay. Okay.
So, the other major thing that I wanted to communicate to you was how the board has changed in the last year or so. And this is a board that is looking more into long-term planning. So for the last couple of years, I've been on this board for nine years now, and I'll be honest with you, I kind of just, I don't feel like I was, in retrospect, I don't think I was as, I don't know, intelligent, smart, as I should have been the first couple of years. But in the last couple of years, I've been thinking, why do we do our budgeting one year at a time? Why do we never look five years ahead of time? I know that when I have to replace my own roof in my own house, I know when I'm going to have to replace my own car a couple of years from now, why don't we do that kind of looking? And then, this past spring, we realized that we had a policy that said we should be looking at these things on a regular basis. So we have established a Building and Grounds Committee, which started over the summer, and is looking at planning out our expenditures on buildings, grounds, big-ticket items over a five-year period. And this is the first time that we have done this kind of five-year planning and estimating of expenses, rather than going year to year. In addition to that, there are some other big-ticket items that I'm asking the Supervision District to start considering. We've talked recently about whether the Supervision Four District should hire a consultant to come in to the Supervision Area and the Region Four Area, and tell us where we could be more efficient. There's pros and cons to hiring a consultant. I'm not sure we're going to, we're going to talk, we talked about it very briefly, and we decided we didn't have enough information during our budget season. So it's my goal to make sure that that conversation, instead of starting in December next year, starts in August. Because we really need to talk about some of these ideas before the budget season, and not during the budget season. And that's it. I've suddenly run out of steam. So, again, I'm here to tell you that I'm more than happy to come to your meeting, should you have questions or concerns or things come up. So is Jane. And I hope that we can start to communicate more and plan together more, as we move through the next five, 10 years. And then I'm moving to Hawaii.
And our first budget workshop is tomorrow night. I don't know if Dwayne's second is going to be.
What board is you are on?
Region Four.
Okay.
And basically, because Region Four, we don't report to the Finance Committee, which always is kind of an issue, we go right directly to the voters. So we really want to make sure we go to the Finance Committees and have your input.
And any of the plans that you're considering, like hiring a consultant, is that going to be more money?
Yeah, well, that's why it's a big budget item that I think needs to be started, the discussion needs to start in August, not in December. I personally don't know if we should have a consultant or not, but if we're going to talk about it, we should talk about it with enough time and enough information to make a sensible decision.
The school has a rainy day fund, which personally, as a taxpayer, I object to. I agree with the Building Committee, because I think that any project of any size needs to go to the town for a vote, for the town to fund, not a rainy day fund that the Supervision District decides, oh, we're going to go buy some property that we don't need. Whether we do need it or don't need it, it was the school's decision, not the townspeople voting on that. Is there any plans to get rid of the rainy day fund, which was just started a few years ago, to return the funds like we had been, year after, that the school had been year after year after year, so that our budgets were not as impacted? Because right now, the schools are putting in that cushion money, putting aside some rainy day funds, as opposed to taking in consideration that everybody's taxes are being, we're having such a hard time paying our taxes, that to be setting funds aside for our own roof that needs to be repaired, isn't, I don't feel it's appropriate. Is there any plans on taking that into consideration?
Do you want to answer that? Well, I think, well, a lot of that is the Building and Grounds Committee, is really to look to see what's coming down the road. And what would happen at the end of the year, there'd be a surplus, money left over. And at that point, basically, what we were doing is keeping half of it, putting it into a capital fund, which is a capital reserve fund, which I guess is basically allowed for any, our district. And then the other, we're returning to the town. And my understanding is now, through this, we're going to have a much better idea of what's coming up in planning. And then if money goes into that, it will be upfront, as opposed to what surplus is left over.
Okay, but in the past, it was against the school's bylaws to be doing that. They were supposed to be returning the money. So they literally had to change the bylaws, my understanding, in order to accommodate that change.
The bylaws were not changed. We learned about, we learned about.
It's a policy base.
It's a policy. It's a policy. We learned about the policy. There was misinterpretation and a lot of discussion about the policy. The bottom line is, we now understand and have agreement about the policy. We decided not to change the policy. We decided to follow the policy. My policy is to follow policy.
Okay, so that's very different from what everybody had been told in the scuttlebutt that went around the town.
Scuttlebutt.
So, yeah, I know, scuttlebutt, but nobody was correcting that from the school. And the money had been going back to the towns. Are we going to start doing that again?
That's what we, our policy says, so that's what we'll be doing.
Oh, yeah.
But that's the, not only that, the whole thing.
That was what we were doing. Now we're going to be in a position to hopefully have an aug of it, but I think we're going to be putting money upfront for this plan.
Well, if I can chime in, I sat on the committee, the grounds committee. And they looked out five years. There's some things that have to be repaired now. Some of them are safety concerns, some of them, you may have a leaky roof at John Winterup that's causing more of a damage, so we tried to prioritize what needs to be done now, and then there were some big-ticket items that we'll wait for Santa Claus to come, because there's some big-ticket items. But at least there's a five-year plan of what's going to happen. And to interrupt the ladies, or to talk to ladies, they want to take that money and put it upfront now, versus at the end of the year, where in the past, if there was $100,000 extra at the end of the year, they'll send $50,000 back to the three towns and put $50,000 into the sinking fund. They can't do that no more. If there's any money left at the end of the year, my understanding is that 100% has to go back to the towns. But we'll just use an arbitrary number, just say, this year's capital gain, capital project, they want $100,000. They want to put that $100,000 into this year's budget upfront.
With a description.
For a specific project.
For a project.
Exactly.
There is a form that was handed out with us, I think it's going to be presented tomorrow night, right? At your budget workshop?
I presume so.
Okay, so it, after that, I'm sure it'll be public, but it breaks down a roof, a boiler, or whatever, so, you know, and then.
Yes, that's going to be handed out tomorrow.
You know, there's some sidewalks, some curbing, some paving, some athletic fields, so all that's broke down into a five-year plan, which is different than they've done in the past.
Right, right.
So, at least.
The sinking fund.
Capital reserve fund.
Reserve, capital reserve fund is gone. Is that what you're saying?
No, it's better, it's better described. It was always a fund that money was put into and money was taken out as it was needed. Now we're saying, we're putting in money, and this is what we're going to spend it on. And then through the year, we take it out, and that's what we spend it on. So the ins and the outs are more apparent to everybody.
So what's, what's in that fund now? How much is in that fund?
How much is in the fund? Do you know?
No.
It's not very much.
It's not very much, because there was a paving that was done, there was also a oil tank that was leaking that had to be pulled out.
I think it's less than $100,000.
So it's gone way down.
So if I, I think that's what Bud was asking, what, so this fund that, just say, there's $100,000 in that fund, that's going to go by, or going to be put towards future projects.
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 Right. And so at the end of the year, if there is a surplus, that money's going to come back to us. That's my understanding.
Right, so there are plans already for how that money is going to be spent in 2018 and 2019?
I think before, the idea was, what would happen is, we'd have a budget, and the first thing that would cut out of the budget was any kind of capital expense. So what seemed to be happening is we kind of put that in back at the end, and went into that fund. And now it's saying, wait a minute, now we want to have a plan, we want to look forward, put the money upfront, and be really clear about what it's going to be spent for. So there's a lot more transparency as well as planning.
Following Lori's question in, we were taken by surprise, others could join in, by the acquisition of property in Deep River, by this fund, funded by this fund. Are you telling me that will never happen again?
I can only tell you what's going to happen for the next three and a half years while it's my pleasure to be the chair.
Are you telling me you're not, there's no money that's going to be sitting aside in some fund that will take us by surprise? If you're going to buy something, it will be in your budget?
Yes.
That's what it sounds to me, is that this is an intent, the intent of this, is to be much closer to what our town budget is. It's going to be real. Here's our capital improvement plan. In order to fund that, we need to budget this much money per year to go into that. And if there's a surplus, it comes back to the towns. It doesn't go, well, gosh, we got extra, we'll keep 50, and we'll keep building this. It's going to actually be a budgeted capital improvement plan, is what I hope, is my, at least, that's my understanding.
That's.
And then the towns will have an opportunity to say, when we're voting for the budget, to say, well, that's pretty high, and, you know, maybe fields aren't really appropriate right now, and that we could pull out $100,000 from that budget just there, or whatever those items might be.
Right. So I feel like you need a little reassurance, and I've realized how I can give you some reassurance, which is that we have a policy that says, our Building and Grounds Committee will meet twice a year at a minimum, and that it will have members from the board, but also have members from the towns. So this Building and Grounds Committee, which has been meeting several times already, has contained several members from our board, but also Lauren Geister? How do you say it?
Just Lauren.
Geister, Lauren Geister, you were there. I don't remember who was from Essex, but there was somebody else. My point being, that the Buildings and Grounds are the committee charged with making sure that there is a plan, and the plan is followed, and it's our policy that that committee meets at least twice a year, and that it has members of your towns in it. So that's the structure that's going to continue this.
And that's a new structure.
As a board, you'll have the ability, as a board of ed, to tell us during budget season that you will do something during the year, you have the ability to change it, do you not? Or you claim whatever is in that budget will not change?
We have policies that say that we can't change, we can't make more than a $5,000 transfer without a board vote, right?
Yeah, we can transfer things. I mean, basically, it's a estimate.
It's just the rules of the land.
That the Board of Education can move monies around without us coming back.
So here's the thing, we, I was on the board when that decision was made. I was on the board when that decision was made.
Decision to buy.
To buy the property.
To buy, yeah, yeah. We made it feeling that it was the best thing to do. We didn't realize what a public relations disaster it was going to be. But it was still made with the best of intent. And you can call me naive, or you can call me incompetent, but it wasn't made out of malice, or ill-will, or a sense of egotism. It was a unanimous decision, wasn't it?
I wasn't there for the last vote, but I think that, basically, we talked about it, we heard that the selectmen were in favor of it. I think in terms of the transparency of actually how it happened, it was not a good situation.
My point being is that we have suffered the public's contempt, and that's not a lesson I need to repeat.
You did not have a good meeting at the hearing last year. I recall that.
Yeah, we want to do better, and that's really.
You don't want to go through that again.
No, but the other thing is, we really, you know, we're part of the towns, and, you know, we really care about what people are doing, and we understand how expensive the schools are. We want to make sure we're all working together and be on the same page, and.
Just to bring up a point that Angus mentioned, that if you put in your capital budget to put in the field, and we, and the budget somehow, you know, goes through, or we cut the, we say, no, we don't think you need a field, not us, but the town, you know, the voters, they decide you don't need a field, so they cut the $100,000 from the budget. That doesn't mean you're not going to get your field. That only means you'll lose $100,000 from your budget. Because we can't control what you do with your money, once you get it. So, we can't look at this.
So, cooperative agreement. The cooperative agreement would allow the towns to vote on their portion, K to 12. It would give you a lot more control and say over what happens in your town about these things. It's not going to solve every problem, but I think it's going to give you more, I've said it already, control over how you're spending your money on your kids, particularly if it's K through six, but also for other Deep River-related things. The buildings.
We're just, I think the other thing, this cooperative agreement, once it happens, we're not sure exactly how it gets implemented, so it's going to be taking time.
It's going to take years.
Years to figure that out.
I was going to ask this question on this cooperative thing.
Yeah. I don't understand.
I'm very unhappy with Regional Four's setup, the way it's set up. Essex and Chester always override Deep River. It's probably Deep River's fault for not getting out enough voters to vote. At any rate, other people are deciding our budget. We have actually, basically, zero control. I would not want to get into another situation with the K through 12, that we put ourselves in that same fix again.
Right, but that's because the whole town, the whole budget, the whole Region Four budget goes to referendum.
Correct.
So you have the population of Essex overwhelming by numbers the population of Deep River. Under the cooperative agreement, it would go to a town vote. So your portion of the sixth through 12th grade, plus your elementary school, would be rolled into one budget that your town votes on.
I don't think that's.
So there'd be three votes at the end of the day?
I don't think so, Jennifer.
Okay.
We're not sure. All we, the one thing about the cooperative.
We're still learning.
Is it would allow, as an LEA, it would allow all the teachers to be able to be under one district, so you could kind of share teachers. It would allow all the special education, especially, which now we can't do with the three elementary schools, to group those children, because they have to go to their local school. So a Deep River child can't really go to Chester, even though they might have the same needs. But if you're one LEA, you could do that, if there's some special classes, you could move some things around. So it really helped, especially in the special ed, big time there. I have to say, at this point, I don't understand how it would work for seven through 12, because it's such a unique situation when you're sharing a building.
I think our biggest concern, just mine, and what Bill, follow the bill, is the voting. You know, right now, with the Region Four, the referendum comes out, and, you know, everyone works very hard on the budgets, you know, I commend everyone up, I say it every year, but Deep River votes it down, but we get overtaken by Essex or Chester. Where if this new corporate trust comes in, or this corporate thing.
Cooperative agreement.
Agreement, is it going to be the same voting question? And I think that's what Bill's concern is, that if it, if it does, we're in the same boat now, as we were.
K through, with K through six.
Correct.
So that's, that's.
Eight percent of the budget's going to be decided by.
Correct.
We were a board.
It would be worse.
We might as well put the fire department in your budget, a little bit that is left.
Then we can just go home.
Yes, we can just go home.
Anyway.
Well, they would.
Norman, you want to gather some more information?
I think it's going to be, I think it's definitely, there would be cost centers for the elementary school, so you would basically vote for your elementary school. How it happens exactly, I think.
It's not going to be a referendum.
Would it be ADM?
So I don't think we need to take.
We don't know, because we really don't know.
But, did you have more that you wanted to say?
It's.
No.
I have a comment, and it is this, Deep River, in the last, pick a timeframe, three or four years, the amount of money that we send to Region Four has gone up approximately a million dollars.
About three.
I'm just talking ballpark.
About eight dollars, yeah.
That's a lot of money, yes. When our entire budget for the town is 16 million, give or take, a million dollars is a lot. Those two schools have the approximate same budget as Deep River does for its entire town. Instead of looking for ways to spend a little extra money, and I applaud the look forward, I think that's important. I think it's important, I know it's important. But we should also. But we should also look at ways to get to zero, or as close as possible, or under if possible. That's what we need, our, our, our budget has been busted in the last few years. And I know, I've heard the ADM and, and all of the various other things that go into that, but at the end of the day, we're up eight or ten percent, I don't know what, you know, I didn't do the maths.
We don't have our homework all together either.
But, you know, we're up one sixteenth over the last three years and we can't continue to do that. You have to look at ways to stay at zero, not, what else can we do, what else can we build, what else can we buy? We need zero for a few years, not just one, a while.
That was very close to the message that I brought up to the Board of Ed a year and a half ago. It was, you know, Deep River needs some relief. Our town infrastructure was suffering as a result of the bills that we were having to pay to Region Four. And it was not received with any understanding whatsoever. In fact, I was told that, well, Essex kids aren't going to suffer because Deep Rivers have troubles. And that was incredibly frustrating for me to come to and ask for some cooperation and be told something like that.
Deep River is still a, a working class town and I don't mean in the way that we used at UARCO thirty or forty years ago, but most, most of the people in Deep River are, you know, moms and dads who work and they have a couple of kids who are retirees. Not unlike all the other towns too, I realize, we're not special in that regard. But many people are having trouble and I see it firsthand. And it's, I, I don't, I don't mean to, that's not, that's not exactly your thought, I know, but I want to give that message out because I'm speaking for the town as a whole and for young parents who have a couple of kids in the school system who are having trouble making ends meet. And elderly who want to hang out to their houses, who aren't working anymore. And they want to stay and I want them to stay and I want the young kids to stay. That's what makes a village, but we have to have the where we're from today.
Eight to ten percent increase too, if you, if you look at it, you know, sort of holistically, it's in the context of declining enrollment.
Correct.
So it's even worse than eight or ten, it's, it's worse than an eight or ten percent increase. You know, your per pupil cost is going up well above that. So, to your point, you know, you have this big increase in the context of delivering educational services per pupil, where if it, if it was a zero sum game and the amount you were spending was sort of flat or adjusted for inflation, it shouldn't be going up anywhere near that.
Good point.
Much less.
We have excellent schools, I know this, I read about the ratings of the schools in Connecticut and Valley Regional and John Junior High are very highly rated. And I like that, fine, but there's a point at which I just, we just can't do it anymore.
One thing I'd like to also bring up in talking of the enrollment, is something that we've been hammering on for at least a decade, what is being done about the reduction in total enrollment? You talk about a building committee, well and grand, appreciate that.
Last year we basically lost a whole section, like John Winter, it was four teachers, five teachers really.
Okay, so it is. Being developed so that we can cut the budget because of the decrease.
So we, I mean, we did that there, I think we're going to see that move through the high school, but again, I mean, there's many needs to be looked at. So I think we have to actually start early and that's why I think we're talking about a five-year budget, really looking at things while we can.
And Dr. Rorke, when she comes, she, she gives us the, the charts that shows the declining enrollment and the projections.
It's not declining quite as much as we thought it was to, it's actually kind of leveling off a little bit, so. No, but we have our work to do and we really need to have.
And we have MBR to contend with, which we're still dealing with on the, on the elementary school. You know, the, the budget reductions are, are restricted by the state. Simply because the population drops doesn't mean you can drop your budget. And we, we're going to continue arguing that, that the cuts were made, did not cut any programs and the students did not suffer in, in the least.
We, we met their budget pretty much, as I remember.
Yeah, no, it was, there was a good substantial drop in the budget as a result of the population and, and a retiring teacher. And, and we got, the state came out with their formula after our budget was done. We were told we reduced it by too much and we've had that conversation and we continue to argue that.
We are still arguing that.
Yeah, oh yeah.
We haven't had an update recently.
No, no, no. But, you know, that's, that's just something to keep in mind when you say, well, look, there's, there's ten percent let fewer kids than there were last, you know, let, let five years ago. We should reduce the budget by that much, well, you know, you can't.
You can't reduce it by the ten, and I understand that, but why are we going up ten and twenty?
That's the question.
You know, leave it flat as opposed to going up.
That, I think, is the real question.
I think the one thing that could upset me would be the education cost sharing money. So Deep River makes out very well, we've received much more money than Essex or Chester, right, a million six, a million seven. If the state decides to cut that back to our town, we're going to be in dire straits. There's no, because we have very little in reserves and it's, it'll impact us like unbelievably.
And that's part of the, you know, that's part of the delicacy of the argument about the MBR.
Yeah.
Because that's tied directly to the ECS money.
To complement Tommy's point, I could make up a scenario where the state of Connecticut does not know what to do with its teacher retirement funds and begins to pass a substantial portion of that on to the towns.
That's a continued conversation, we heard it last year, as, being presented as, as a real option for the state, that got received badly in the legislature, but it is being received with a little more open, uh.
Openness.
Conversation, yeah, openness, and it is being suggested again. So, I think we, we should pay attention to that. We're going to be seeing more costs and Deep River does extremely well with the ECS money.
Question.
I am not, going back to your, I'm sorry, I'm going back to your decision to buy the fields. I do not doubt that anyone up there made a decision on the best information they had, but you did not have to face voters who were paying for it. I'm suggesting your criteria is the best for the students, or we have to sit here and do a balance between what is best for all citizens within the constraints of a budget. We start much of our discussions here with what is, what is the tolerance that we would allow the budget to go up? And I have to watch my tone. Often you folks come in here with a number that is bigger than what we're accepting and it's very frustrating. There's other words, but yes. Do you make any decisions based on what criteria does to taxpayers? Is that part of your criteria?
It is. I think last year we heard from the selectmen and we really worked hard to kind of keep it down, it's hard. I think, I know this year, we're hearing the health costs are out for bid, that's, that's, those are going up, there's new teacher negotiation, it's, it's tough, so.
We are required to cut. You hand to us something for our budget, we don't get the option of saying, it's going up, we have to cut. We're expecting that same from you and there's frustration we haven't seen.
Come to our bookshops.
We do and then we get told.
You're doing a wonderful job, I just, it's frustrating when the numbers get here.
Yep.
No, we, I think there's a lot of understanding there, you know, to, to go back to the property just for one more thing, I'm not sure that the message that the selectmen gave to the superintendent was accurately represented. You know, we certainly thought the concept was good and we encouraged the concept, but the rush to purchase was not discussed, we were all caught by surprise when that purchase was made.
Could we stop at this point of information for me? What was the concept in buying this land? Why was it bought? Was there a plan for it? Or was it because there was money there and this was a deal that came up and let's go ahead and buy it and it'll, we'll hold it for future reference? And if, and then a second question, can that land be sold and that money come back into the budget? Or back to the towns and then used for something else?
The second question is easy, yes, it can be sold. To answer your first question, which was much longer, Art, you, you want to answer that, don't you?
No, I know. Don't you answer it.
Our, our athletic fields are in abysmal condition and that land was for sale at a higher price. If you were planning or thinking that someday in the future you would want to expand your own property for a larger garden or a shooting range, and if land next to you came for sale and if then the owner offered you a reduced price, you would look at it very seriously. So, you answered the question yourself, you said, did we buy it for the future? Yes, we bought it for the future. A large part of that land could be developed for athletic fields and our athletic fields are not safe. And so that's what, that's, that's the whole rationale.
How are they not safe?
It could also be, it could also be used as, you know, as campus for a regional elementary school if we were, if we, if the towns decided to go that way. There are a lot of options for that property that were, that were considered in the conversation as to whether is this a good idea or a bad idea? And I think everyone around the table at the meeting I was at agreed that it was a good idea. For all, all of the same reasons, it's a good plan. We did not need to move as quickly as we did and we did not need to do, to do it without, without better public repatience. Educate in the community, there's no question about that and I think that the board has learned that lesson. And, you know, we are where we are with it and I think that, that there are, there are problems with the field.
How are they not safe?
No, there are.
The football field, there's several, several holes and divots in it. I, I believe there was a, a state game that got canceled because the field was unplayable, that the refs canceled it. I sat, I sat on a committee when I was on a Region Four Board of Education ten plus years ago and we looked into putting athletic fields, AstroTurf back then, and it was going to be eight hundred to a million dollars and it got shot down.
Yeah.
I'm an opponent for, I, I'm, I'm for athletic, you know, a turf field, because with the new laws you can't put certain pesticides on the fields now and that's what keeps them growing, that's what keeps them healthy. You make your good investment now for an athletic field, a turf field, it's going to pay off down the road. Yeah, you have cleaning expenses that you have to clean the AstroTurf for, you know, people's sweat and everything else, but in the long run, it, I think it's a good investment. And when I was on board years ago, I, I was for it.
The other part of that is we have more teams playing now, there are, there are more, there are more sports being played, there are more teams on the fields and, and fields, whether those fields are safe or not, we still need more fields just for the kids, have, have the kids have a place to play.
The main competition field at Valley, you have football, girls soccer, boys soccer, field hockey plays on it and then you have some travel teams that play on it, it, it's a lot of wear and tear out for one field. John Winter, if you go, John Winter on a Saturday morning and there's five, four, five hundred young boys and girls running around playing soccer, the fields don't have a chance to, to regrow.
A lot of communities actually have, like Clinton has a big area where they have all these fields, so maybe more fields can be developed there that really are community fields. And I guess it was the feeling is, once in a lifetime, a piece of adjacent property comes next to your, your school and that's what we went for. So, but I, I totally agree, I think we, you know.
We didn't understand the implications for the population.
And I also, and I don't think we also understood exactly what the, what the message from the selectmen were too.
And probably the financial climate at the time. People are paying more and more and more money in a state budget that's falling apart, that they're going to probably tax you beyond belief and now people in town are being asked to pay more money to their town taxes to support whatever in your town, more growth, you know, maybe there's a, some wisdom in the recycle, reuse adage that mean, rather than building more and new, what can we do with what we have? How can we improve it, rather than facing people with more money that they have to pay? It's, it's an improbable situation, it's like chasing your tail.
No, I, and I think it was the climate, I think when we did it and then it was the next year where there's those problems with the ECS money, everything kind of came down, so I thought, wow. So it all seemed to happen and it was.
I personally, you know, again, get on my soapbox that buying a field, like buying a property, I think was a waste of money. But, I would rather seen that three hundred and fifty thousand or whatever it was, the bottom line figure was, take that and put it into the athletic field and there's a third of your turf field that in the long run you're going to win. Because that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're still going to have to put a half a million dollars into it to develop into fields. So, now you're three fifty and a half a million, eight hundred and fifty thousand, we can have a brand new beautiful track and a new turf field. So that's my soapbox that I have up. I would like to see it sold and take that money and put it into new fields, but that's just my.
You recycle.
That's my opinion.
So building a grounds committee.
No, no thing, I, I commend, you know, I say it every year, I commend all you people that do the board, you have a tough, tough time up there and you're going to have a tough time starting tomorrow night too, but, but thank you.
Shall we say everything again? I'm afraid if we keep that, we'll keep you here, we'll keep repeating the same stuff. Thank you very much for reaching out and again, Jane has been reaching out to me, but I have not accepted. So thank you for reaching out, thank you for coming to see us and we invite you back and.
Thank you.
Thank you, really.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't realize how nice those are. It's a pretty chair.
All right, just a point of order. They have to clean the fields, surf turf because kids sweat.
They sweat in the battlefield, you have, you have to wash them.
The fabric, the man-made ones, the official ones.
They have to go because kids sweat. Wow.
You didn't know that?
I didn't know that. I guess you need a better team that doesn't, doesn't tackle you. Nobody falls down on the field, I did not know that.
Kidding, their clothes can stand up in the corner on their own.
We need to stand, kids will stand up. All right, our next, we, now we turn to our normal programming. The next item would be Tommy, are you, you have anything to share?
I have the town deposit. Okay, I've, I've made three transfers of funds, there's tax revenue monies that are coming in. One on January seventh for seven hundred thousand, one on the fourteenth for seven hundred thousand and then actually today, one for a million and three. That went from Citizens Bank to People's United Bank and you'll see that, that balance is up at four million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand plus. And right now we have very little in the, in our general fund, but I know Kate does have some money that will be, she'll be collecting, so I know there was about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars that she had today.
I appreciate you trying to be cordial here, but that sort of suggests that she's got it sitting at home and I just want to make sure it's not an accurate fact.
I know, I had, I've spoken to Kathy today and she said she had talked to, to Kate and she did have some money that she was going to be depositing into that general fund account. And certainly in the next week, we'll be getting a significant amount of money there too. And we're getting a decent rate of return there at, at one and a half percent. And if you look at our operating funds at the top, the general fund accounts, we are totaled at four million, seven oh nine, almost four million, seven oh, seven ten. If you look at last year where we were at this time, for those three accounts, we were at four million, eighty thousand. So we're up around six hundred and twenty-nine, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars from where we were last year. If you look at the total deposits on the bottom, you'll see we're at five million, six hundred and thirty-two thousand plus last year, at, at this time, we're at four million, nine sixty-four. So we're up around six hundred and sixty-eight and a half, six sixty-eight, six sixty-nine. So we're doing, you know, doing much better this year than, than last year. You'll, you'll see the Dime account, which is for Kirtland and River Street sewer expansions, that account is going to be closed. I know that Kathy has already made a check out for eleven thousand, thirteen dollars and seventeen cents. That's going to be transferred into our general, our general fund account. Let's see what else.
Is that a payment of specific?
Excuse me?
Is that a payment of anything specific?
It's just that, you know, that, that project has been completed, it was kind of like an overage that we had that we.
Those money that was held back for some work that was not completed properly.
So she's already made out the check, it just, it just hasn't gone into the general fund account yet. Educational cost sharing funds, we should be getting a quarter of the, the monies either at the end of this month or early February, so that'll be approximately four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars that will be going, that'll be coming our way.
Is that the second check we, we get?
That's, well. That's, well, that's the first for this year. So we usually get like a quarter in January, February. We get half in April. And then the other quarter in October. That's pretty much how.
Okay, so in the fiscal year though, this is the second.
Yes, in the fiscal, yeah. I did speak to James Sullivan today from Essex Financial Services. I thought it was time that we scheduled another meeting for, to discuss our town employees and firefighters' pension plans. He was going to give me some dates. I will pass those along to Angus and then to Bud and see if we could set up that meeting. I think the last meeting we had was in October, I believe. So we try to have it at least every three or four months a year. So that's pretty much it.
We have to selectmen, recommendations, selectmen. Angus, do you have any recommendations? Anything you wish to take?
Recommendations, particularly just some information. We received a LOSE payment of fifty-four thousand dollars for projects that we've done. We applied for that grant for, to be reimbursed for the monies that we spent on the trash compactor up at the dump and also the cameras that we put around the fields.
What cameras?
A bunch of security cameras, yeah. So we were reimbursed in full for both of those projects. And just today, I got a letter from the DOT that the state has awarded us another sixty-eight thousand dollars towards a future project, something that I applied for back in two thousand seventeen. But they took that money away. And they put the money back and awarded the grant. So we're kind of project, sidewalk project on River Street to complete the loop around the walking area, around River Street, Kirtland Street, and Main Street. And hopefully connect to some other walking areas down there for the future development, future plan.
Having jogged on that street, there's some outcroppings along the way. Is that town road or do we have to do an end domain?
That is town, that's town.
That's a town road.
Actually, we've had some people looking at that. We think that the section that we need to go through there should be able to peel that ledge away and just build on top of it. So it should be, we should be okay there.
Speaking of sidewalks and walking from where I am down at the end of the sidewalk and then trying to get into town, there are areas where there's so much leaf debris and other crap that over years has just kind of filtered down. The sidewalk's about that big.
I noticed that when I was running this fall.
Yeah. Is there any plans to get some of the kids that need a job to improve their community service? Can you go out there and shovel that stuff into?
Actually, the intent is to get the town crew out there to do that.
Yeah, sometimes it's getting bad.
Yeah, there's a couple of sections actually. I guess headed up towards Route nine, exit five. Same thing is happening. Just, I didn't notice it till I was running on it.
It's been a number of years. But it's just been getting narrower and narrower.
So that's all good news as far as the finances go. We're, I forgot to mention at this electmen's meeting, so sorry, fellas, but we've hired an assistant to the tax collector and to the accounts manager. Both of those positions have been open for quite a while. We have a person who has worked in the tax collector's office for a couple of years as an assistant on a temporary basis. Kate, Katie Ely, Katie Campbell Ely. And she's taken on both roles. And she'll fill in, she'll be in the tax collector's office. She'll be in the accounts manager's office. And she'll also be in the selectmen's office to help spell when Gina and Jonathan are not around. So really fill three good roles. And we're looking forward to her starting coming in.
Just a compliment, but when I shared that with me, I was concerned about would it require an increase in the budget that we had to approve? Both of these are open positions. So there should not be an increase. It may put some pressure on benefits, but we will deal with that as time comes. I don't think.
I don't think that it will. We also have a new, Dorothy has retired from the cleaning, doing the cleaning for the town. And she was collecting benefits. She was contributing towards that a little bit every month. But she was also collecting. So I think the pressure that we get from putting Kate on is going to be relieved by Dorothy getting off of it. So I think it's, I think really the town hall will be a much, will have two and a half roles filled. That should be, it'd be a much more efficient place to be, to have, serve, to be more service oriented. There will be more people to serve.
Not to be crude, but do we have somebody now hiring or a firm cleaning?
Yeah, so we've interviewed four different people. We have someone doing it on a temporary basis until we make that decision. It should be in the next week or so.
Is that a personal member of the town crew?
No. We did have, the crew did fill in for a week or so before we had someone in here temporarily. Not cleaning, but collecting trash and doing those kind of things. And also at the community health, there were days of some work, things that needed to be a little bit more elbow grease to be scrubbed. And they went up and did some of that. One of the things that I just want everyone to be aware of and take advantage of the camera is, you know, with this federal government shutdown, we're hearing an awful lot about employees who are experiencing difficulties. But there are a lot of folks that maybe collect food stamps or other programs that are not necessarily government employees, but who will be affected by this. I had a good conversation with Rosie today about that. And if this goes on a heck of a lot, if this goes on much longer, we're going to see our food bank is going to be really hit pretty hard. I just would like anybody to, we might need to set up another program or something just to get another collection going or something. We'll have to see. Hopefully this will end. But it's not just the Coast Guard employees. And there are other folks that are affected that are going to hurt us.
Residents of Deep River can visit the food pantry. And we have, we're ready to help them. Well able to help them. And we want them to come take advantage of that service that the town provides.
Other than that, I think we're, that's it for now.
Any questions to the selectmen? We go to the financials? Does that sound appropriate? If there is no resistance, I'm going to have you start with the revenues. And then you'll go to our traditional expenditures. And I want you to remember Tommy's gleeful disclosure that we have more, how did you phrase it? Tommy, set me up again. You've got more dollars coming in. Do you feel comfortable that dollars are coming in aggressively? That's the way. Here it is, first line on our revenues. I just want to draw it to your attention. We assume that the town, this budget would get fourteen point six million of tax revenues. We are currently at, what, eleven one, suggesting that we are looking forward to having about three point five more. What's throwing me off, I have no ability to say anything more than throwing me off. You would think in January, that number would be closer or not in excess of twenty. But I have nothing to compare it with. Twenty-four percent left remaining, I don't know. We won't. How about do I suggest we keep our eye on that as we move forward? But Tommy's comfort that dollars are coming in complements, gives me comfort that.
Well, just go back to the two hundred and fifty thousand that you talked about, two hundred and forty thousand? That's probably not reflected there.
Two twenty, that Kate had, she was going to deposit it.
And then we still have, you know, ten days left in the month for elections. I think we're, I think we'll see. But we're pretty good.
Let's hope it's a busy ten day.
It always has been.
I paid my taxes, so this doesn't go off.
That's wrong. That first column is the budget from the prior year.
We got to change that, okay.
We got to change a lot of things. It's an odd report. And so we also notice the remaining three or four items are for rough tax collections. There's about three and a half, about three and a half, a little over three and a half million, maybe close to three point six seven left to go. But I feel, I actually take comfort that Tommy thinks we're doing fine. I take you down to Town Road aid, which is what, four four zero ten? We've received half of that. Tommy went through a better explanation of educational equalization. We've still got, we've only collected, what, thirty percent? So we've got plenty coming in, plenty. Do you have, is there any indication that there is, that would be withheld?
No, that I think, I think everyone is pretty confident that that will stay.
That's a good answer. I want to take you to briefly, small numbers. Tax relief for the elderly. We budgeted zero because we were told that zero was coming in. The report we have in front of us says that somebody sent us two hundred and sixty dollars.
Yeah, that's why I have a little asterisk.
Well, we're happy to take thirty dollars. It's just a small number, it's odd. But I would now like to go back and talk about education. We were told that those dollars would be taken out of our educational reimbursement. Were we not? Is that still the talk of the town? So the educational, the educational reimbursement, we will get some dollars less than what we budgeted?
That's my understanding of what was told us when the state passed their budget last year.
And the same is true for tax relief for veterans. We budgeted nothing because we were told we would not get anything. But we received three thousand and fifty-nine dollars. So these are positive answers. Note on the next line.
That can be taken back, I'm sure.
Note on the next line, infrastructure grant. It is zero. Angus just informed us that we received, how much? Fifty-some thousand?
Fifty-four thousand.
Fifty-four thousand. It's not there and it's not there. I'm going to suggest it's clouded in mystery. But here is the rationale why you don't see it. It reimburses expenses that were incurred last year's budgets. Accountants believe in a matching principle that if you spent it last year and you're given a grant to cover it, it should be in the same accounting period. This is one of the first things you learn in accounting. Therefore, it will appear in the budget that is being audited right now. Therefore, the surplus that we will have at the end of last year will grow by that dollar amount. But I suggest to you, I would prefer to see it here.
Memory serves me, but we put that at zero intentionally.
We did.
Because we didn't want to skew.
No, that is correct. It's just you're, excepting that we've gotten it, it would be nice to recognize it as cash available. But there is the answer to that one. Let me, let me take you down. Let me take you down, okay. Parks and Rec, you'll see, is always a bit of a mystery, but they seem to be doing well. Public safety is always a bit of a mystery. You'll see that we budgeted thirty and we've collected more. When we get to the expense side, you will see that we paid out about eighty-five thousand. There's always a lag there. Now, the only thing I wish to remind you is we've got a line item that we put in our budget called new borrowings. And we said we would borrow five hundred and twenty-five, sorry, I work for a company, we have a million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We would borrow that for assets that had long life. Two trucks and the roof of the school. The two trucks, when we get to the expenses, are coming in substantially lower than the three twenty-five we estimated. And the school, we have chosen not to proceed with the total re-roofing, there's a better word for that, for small pieces. We had talked almost in our, probably in July, one of our first meetings, that we would prefer to forego that borrowing. And that remains a good thought. But I just want you, when you look at the revenues, to recognize that we have assumed five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars less because we're not going to borrow. And when we go over to the expenses, we'll look at some of the expenses that are coming much lower. But theoretically, we chose not to have a balanced budget. If we all continue to nod that we do not wish to proceed, we agreed that last year's surplus was surprisingly large. I could work on saying that different. And that we would go to last year's surplus to fund some of this year's expenditure. So I just remind you of the things we nodded to. Now, as we go through, now I'm going to turn you back to our expenses, which is where we get most of that. I think as we go through, you'll find comfort that some of the things we anticipated spending money on have not been spent and may not be. This is the seventh month of the year, suggesting that we are about fifty-eight percent expended, if everything was a straight line, leaving about forty-two percent left, which is the last column with our expenditures report. Looking at selectmen, the bottom line, we are doing fine. Also note that grant writer, we budgeted seven thousand five hundred. And we did not know the results of union negotiations. We put fifteen. Neither of those two has been spent. The union should not be spent because we just reached an agreement with them. And the grant writer, I wish the rest of the world provided such services, has said he would not take it unless we were successful. That's quite a power of, we should have more people in the world.
You just say that the union negotiations are not going to happen?
They are, they're done.
They're all done.
They're done. And Angus could fill you in more.
So that fifteen thousand dollars isn't going to be spent?
Will not be spent in that line item. That is correct. That is the theme I wish to leave with you. All right, moving on. We stop every month at elections and look at printing expenses. Small number, but because the budget is small, it makes the over expenditure, the remaining dollars look a little small. There will be another election.
No, I think the bigger issue there is the registrar's salary. You'll see that that's down at thirteen percent left. That's a direct result of the recounts that we had to hand over this November's election. And we're going to have to hopefully find some of that money in the part-time election salary or something.
Very good, excellent. I had not remembered that. I thought that the only thing remaining would be the referendum.
That's probably the case. But there's not enough there to cover that.
Town hall operations, again, seems to be on the bottom line, doing well. We have talked about the sewer fees, over expenditures. We have talked about them. If you remember, we budgeted for, for the town hall, library, et cetera. There's an additional sum in there because for the house that the fire department owns. We've talked about moving it, but we'll just move it from one place to the next. We seem to be doing fine on fuel oils. Water, we can never seem to get right. We're low on water. And electricity, I suggest there may be some pressure on electricity, but to be determined. Overall, I think we're doing okay. Town clerk is good. Sessors, everybody's doing fine, assessors. I guess I want to take you down to special services. Auditorium is over its budget. I remind you that that's sort of an experimental number. We put a thousand dollars in as a placeholder. They spend money. But on the revenue side, there is dollars collected. We will do better next year with better information. Angus, do you have any idea what the contingency is in special services?
Yes, she uses that line to pay for. I can't say it, no. I know it, but right now it's, I'll come back to it. I have to think it through. She uses that for, I want to say it's town crew overtime, like after that storm, we had to put some overtime in. But that's not correct. It has to do with the costs associated with things like the September floods, things that are not normally budgeted for.
It would be nice, as we go into the next budget too, if they are reoccurring type things, to give it a line item. That just so.
No, that's why it's not. No, that's, that's why it's not, because it's things like, you know, but I'll have, I know we had that outlined very clearly when, when we talked with Kathy in preparation of the budget, and I will, I'll do a better job of getting that answered for you for next month.
We do have a line in there for storms that I thought we were going to be putting in there too.
Well, Angus began his thinking that it was town crew stuff, that seemed logical to put it in there, but I think you renege on saying that was the cause of it. I wish to remind you, I wish to remind you two things. Note that we, tax relief for the elderly reserve, we budgeted $57,000, we have not spent anything according to this, that's incorrect. We have been giving relief to the elderly who qualify and their taxes for quite some time. That's something I'm working on, I'm working with the accountants on how to properly record. We'll deal with it in more detail, something to look forward to in our budget workshop. Angus, Building Official, you and I had a good chance to chat with him. His salary seems low.
Yeah, I will talk with him about that.
Well, it seemed, the remainder seems low.
It is, he's spent, he's spent more time than he should have. But, what that says to me is that there is, there are more applications coming in and more...
And if you look at the revenue, I did not pause there, if you look on the revenue, you will see that there is, we're pretty close to budget, a dollar amount. I'm going to stop for a moment on employee benefits. I remind you, the tax exempt for the firemen, which is 52063, we budgeted 15. What you're looking at says there's only been 250 given, that is incorrect. This is again, something I'm working with, with the, with the auditors on how to treat the accounting on its own. Police Department, the one, the police department, oh, you should stop and see the resident trooper. We budgeted 233,000, there's no doubt that will be the number, it just hasn't stopped in billing yet. So, take comfort and discomfort. It is in the overtime, trooper for muster overtime, we budgeted 13, which is a historical number. We only spent a thousand, thousand one. I do not know what's causing that, that's just a billing from the state, I would imagine, same as a trooper.
Yeah.
And the mystery continues, the mystery, or the story continues.
We did spend less on that. We made budget last year because that is becoming a comer and comer event.
A comer and comer, so we need fewer troopers.
She did not need the troopers that she has needed in the past.
This is good. Funded special police, and we budgeted 30, and so far, remember, and I commented on this a moment ago, we have paid out 85 to our constables and only received 65, and there's always a tension on expenditures and collection. It'd be sad, it'd be nice if there wasn't, but that is always the way it is, so, okay. Let's go to Fire Department, you will see that they are certainly using their physicals.
Well, they've had eight new members.
Eight new members?
So, we're going to see, actually, we will see an expense on uniforms that they're going to need to purchase.
I draw your attention to Fireman Incentive Program, which is that, which is a pension number. I wonder if that number does, we budgeted 49.5, they've only spent 5.5. I'm curious on why there has not been a contribution, but I will follow up on that. Here we are in Highway Department, we should probably spend a few moments on the Highway Department. Everything seems to be working fine for salaries and maintenance, is that, do you accept that, Angus?
Yeah, I think we're, we're in pretty good shape.
Yeah, we're buying new equipment, so the maintenance line is down substantially from prior years. Salt and sand, look at salt and sand, we built a 20, we developed, we put in a $20,000 line item last year, or in this budget, drawing upon actuals from the prior year, we have only spent, that 650 cannot be right, I would think it's got to be, are the next two lines?
Are you trying to jinx us?
What's that? No, no, I'm just saying the line item is wrong. We have definitely spent more than $600 on sand.
I'm sure you spent more than 600 on sand, but you're jinxing us in storms.
I bet you it's the contingency of sand in there too.
That's, that's kind of what I'm wondering about. But we, we've purchased, only one load has been paid for, one load of sand, and that's probably double what we have there. Then another load has been ordered, so I expect we'll see another, we'll see, this will be corrected and you'll see that it's, we're spending, but we are nowhere near what we spent last year, so far.
Sure.
We are. Yeah, I'm very hopeful that the fact that we've spent, just like when you buy, everybody in town buys a snow blower, it doesn't snow for a few years.
Go buy a snow blower, please. Yes. Nice insurance, go buy a snow blower.
Buy those roof rinks.
Yeah, that's right.
And look at Town Road Aid, we have not spent, while we have collected 50%, we have not spent anything on that. And that's usually, usually due in the spring, if I remember.
Yeah, that was spring, we did it much in the fall. We have a bunch we have to do this spring, so.
And the MS4, which is the sweeper, the sweeping of the storm drains, you are working away on that, it looks like.
Yes, yeah.
We have cleaned storm drains, Deep River, that...
Not necessarily.
Not, that's, oh, that's right.
If you look down a few of them, you see them.
Two-thirds, two-thirds of the storm drains have been cleaned in the last two years, and we're just in a cycle. But it had been, it had been about seven years before they've been, since they've been cleaned before that, so.
Well, we have a workshop living in the one on our road.
Is it there?
Yes. We've seen him over the years coming through.
I'm going to, I'm going to, keep on going down. Municipal Library, I read in the paper they were reducing hours because of budget constraints. I don't know if anyone else saw that.
I saw that.
This would not indicate that they are under any great budget constraint, but it won't be the first time that people have blamed things on the budget. I don't, Angus, you're not aware of the...
No, I thought we were taking care of all of that when we prepared the budget last year.
There was some Valley Courier that published.
That's what I heard, you know, I'm going to talk, but I spoke earlier this afternoon, I'll consult the library.
Yeah, so they've spent in the Valley Courier every time it comes out, they reduce their hours.
Yeah. I'll talk to Susan and see what, what that's about. I know that they were going to cut some hours, but that was, that's when we put this budget together, so.
And the rationale is because of budget constraints.
Why else would you cut hours? Because you can't pay for this stuff, certainly not because you can do things more efficiently.
They have zero left in their programs by this.
Let's go down to Park and Rec, always a mystery. But the one I, everything seems to be fine, Park and Rec, other than maintenance of all facilities, which I think the line item needs some tidying up. The maintenance for all recreation facilities is probably a better term, but I question that we have spent $29,000, $28,000 of maintenance.
I'm fairly confident that, that some of that was for town properties that we were doing maintenance on, that got slipped into here.
Keep our eye on that, okay. Anything else just going along? Let me take you down to, let's go down to Capital. If you go to Capital, you will see we budgeted $35,000 for the fire department to put in, I forget the technical term, blowers or something like that, and they have, they are spending away on whatever that, okay.
The ventilation system.
The, the air handling for the exhaust.
Ventilation, and they're spending away on that, so that is good. And here is, Tommy, there will be a question at the end of this thing. We chose in this budget to ask the citizens to begin to prepay the revaluation, pre-fund the preval, which we estimate about $60,000, we would begin to ask for $20,000 a year. My question to Tommy is, can you put that somewhere, Tommy? Well, my question to Tommy, can you, my question to you is, should we, if we do not find a place special to park it, it will go into our surplus? And while I am certain that most of us will probably be here in three years for revaluation, we could have the temptation to spend it on something else. I just, could you put it somewhere and begin to earn longer-term interest, or just set it up? I don't know.
Good question.
And that is all, and that is all I asked you to do, and now it's, I had a good question, so, think about it. Is everyone in agreement with that? As opposed to letting it fall to surplus and remembering it's there, and Tommy, invest the surplus, or should we put it someplace?
You should put it someplace if you can. Because, well, not only is the temptation to spend it, the temptation is that you won't remember it.
All of the above. Now, by the way, I am under the impression that all cash is fungible, I mean, whether it goes to prefunding this, prefunding that, it all gets together and called cash, which makes my question silly, but I wanted to raise it, I like putting it somewhere so that those who come behind us will remember, unless we choose not to be here, but they will remember, we set this aside, and we won't use it, so maybe Tommy can get a slightly higher interest rate, I don't know, but, and every year we will put 20 into it. And that is the question, so we'll...
Similar to the parking recreation line that they raise every year for the playground.
It is similar to, should we consistently answer that in the negative? That's why I didn't want to hate the analogy, so. And I look at the architectural Fire Department, you'll note that Angus is beginning to spend some dollars there.
You'll see some more bills, we've been working hard for the last month or so, getting that to where we can start putting it in front of the town and all that kind of thing.
And Highway Trucks, you will note that we, I'm repeating, we budgeted 325, current expenditures is what, 188? What, do you expect another 50 or something?
I'd pick them, they'll be close to 60.
Close to 60, so we're in the 240 range, which is substantially less than what we budgeted for, which all goes for the reason why we were nodding in affirmative that we should not have to, to borrow. Actually, if you go back up to redemption of debt, assuming that we were going to borrow 525, we put in a payment on that of 144.2. So, again, you could take comfort that what we discussed in July has, continues to hold. We will not have to spend, we'll make a payment on the borrowing we did not make, and what we are using it for is coming in lower, so I think we're okay. I guess I just want to use that as you move through the year, we're in the seventh month, the tool of the budget begins to mean less. I mean, we don't have as much accuracy in these numbers, except the things that we remember to do, so, we no longer have bottom lines that we can compare to each other, we have to start subtracting and talking about them, so. That is all I have to say on the budget. I think that we're doing fine for expenditures, and I think revenues are going to come in as well as we expected, and we should have a surplus. The audit is going on right now?
I think they finished their fieldwork. I expect that we'll have some reports from them, and they've got 10 days or we're going to have to file for another extension, and they promised that we would not have to do that, so.
So, I think we will have a surplus coming out of last year's budget that will be high, and as long as we don't keep coming up with things to spend it on, we should, we should do okay.
No, I think we're going to be in good shape for, for this year and for next. We've done, I think, you know, I commend this group, everybody around this table for working to put this, to work towards getting our, getting our surplus for our rainy day fund where it should be, and we're nowhere near that yet, but we're working towards it. And we benefited this year from conservative budgeting, built on, without the benefit of knowing what the state was going to do, and then the state coming back with, with additional money with that ECS money. That's going to help us next year, you know, to some of the comments at last year's budget, that that money will come, and really come right back into the, into the community. It's really, I think we're in very, very good shape.
But I don't anticipate that we're going to, next year, the year after, the year after, continue to receive that nice funding from the state.
I actually do.
You think...
I'm optimistic. You know, this arguing with the state about this MBR has, there have been indications that, that the ECS money to towns like Deep River is actually going to go up. The question is, do we, do we want to continue to get more and more dependent on the state, given the, given the financial burden that we know the state is on?
And I know we beat this dead horse before, but to receive this budget tonight, during the day today, Ed, there's no time to review it, you know, you're trying to inhale dinner and...
I, I know, and I apologize for that, I can, I told Bud earlier, I started asking her on Thursday to send that out.
Yeah, how you...
I can't, I can't access it to send it out, or I would have sent it out.
Yeah.
I don't know what, she's got another check mark on it. Not a gold star. I know you guys need it, you need to look at it.
Yeah, I mean, it takes some...
It makes for a really boring weekend for me when I don't get questions from you. No, it's good, it's me looking at it too, it's important. It's important that it gets out, then you all have a chance to look at it.
All right, is that, that is it from my memorized, I need a, we do not start our budget work until March, is that it?
March, right.
And Angus, you, I saw you've been writing letters to folks, right?
Letters are out again, again. A good response, we haven't gotten everything we need yet, so, but also, you know, we'll be starting very soon, just going over what we, what we bring to you.
Okay, and any indication of who you want in particular brought to the board during the workshop time that we can invite and say, okay, you've got 15 minutes to give us highlights on what your board is actually doing?
I, I am of the mind that anyone that wants to come in front of the board should come in front of the board. Anybody that, any department that wants to should be here. I know that takes up time, but I think it's important for them to be able to, to argue their argument.
Get in touch with me and, and...
As soon as I get something from everybody, I'll send out another note to everyone. If you feel you want to speak to the board, make your arrangements now.
Give them an email and my cellphone, and they can send me a text and whatever, work it up, absolutely.
All right.
You should paraphrase that, the answer is no, if you want.
Okay, let's replace this.
Boy, that's a tough group.
Although, you know, to that point, these folks come in and ask us for money, we all sit here and ask questions, nod down there, I'm sure they leave, say, I got them, nailed them, then they get their budget.
But you know, we learned so much.
Oh, there's no doubt about that.
I think it was good, a good exchange.
I know, I'm absolutely agree with that, yes.
Our next meeting is Tuesday, 24, Tuesday the 26th, and then the following Tuesday we start workshops on the 5th.
Oh, oh, that's...
It's that quick.
That quick?
So February 26th, next regular meeting, and then the following Tuesday, first budget, if we're ready.
We're six weeks away.
And we probably should just say, okay, let's have that as a night of three people coming in to meet with us.
That's actually not a bad idea. We should be ready. I hope we are. I will tell you this, the state, when we were up, we went to the cost meeting the other day, and there was a nice panel of state representatives, a couple senators, a couple state reps, and they were pretty clear that they did not anticipate having their budget done before, well, well after we're done. So we are going to once again be working with the governor's proposed budget, anything that we hear in the meanwhile.
Were the legislators okay new ones or seasoned ones?
They were all seasoned. Ritter, Austin, Thelma, I can't remember the last name, and Le, it was good, I mean, we were pretty well represented. They didn't have much good to say.
Any other business to come before the board? Not, can I hear a, what is it, a recommendation, a proposal, a resolution?
Motion.
A movement, can I have a movement?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Oh, in favor.
Oh, in favor, say yeah, thank you.
All right, all right.
All right.